Hi, good afternoon, everyone. We are live. Mr. Chair, you are in control.
Thank you. This is Mayor Herring. This is a special meeting of the Morro Bay City Council. It is Thursday, April 1st, 2020 at 4:00 p.m. We are in various locations practicing social distancing and sheltering in place. The quorum, let me call the order to make sure that we have a quorum. Councilmember Davis?
I'm here.
Thank you. Councilmember Heller?
Here.
Councilmember McPherson?
Here.
And Councilmember Addis?
Here.
Great, we do have a full quorum of the city council. And before I begin, I will call the meeting to order, but before I begin, I want to give a community update on the current status of COVID-19 in San Luis Obispo County. And after that, I will open it up to general public comment for items on the agenda. And we do have a call-in number. I will give you that information prior to announcing the opening of public comments so that people have that in case they have not seen that prior. My update today is one of great thanks to not only our community, but also to members of our staff at the city and our council members. This has been a time that has not only been trying for our staff, but also for our community at large, as well as the world as a whole. And I will tell you that Morro Bay and the county of San Luis Obispo has risen to the occasion. Although this may seem like a season of doom and gloom, there's much hope and much positive that's coming out of this. And I hope to not only accentuate the issues for you, but also talk to you about the hope that is in the midst of a pandemic like this that comes out of community volunteerism, community compassion, and community caring. First, let me recognize our essential services, police, fire, our maintenance folks, and those who operate our wastewater treatment facility. These folks are on the front line. They continue to come to work daily. And I think the community owes them, I know the community owes them a great amount of thanks for their service and commitment to the community. These are folks that literally risk their lives every day, not only in what they do, but now with potential exposure to COVID-19. I'm very proud of our frontline individuals that I mentioned previously. In addition, we have a large number of staff either working at home, or working at home, I should say, to help to maintain essential administrative and other functions of this state. As you may know, if you watch the media, or if you go to ReadySlow, that's R-E-A-D-Y-S-L-O.org, I'll give you information for not only San Luis Obispo County, or for many of you that do not follow this on a daily basis. At present, as of 4/1 today, there are 83 cases confirmed positive COVID-19 in San Luis Obispo County. That's in contrast to March the 16th, when we had only three cases. And the point I want to make with that, ladies and gentlemen, is that our curve continues to rise, although there appears to be a small amount of flattening of the curve, which is good, or slowing down of the spread of the virus at this point. Of the 83 cases that we have confirmed as of today, fully, three of those are in age groups 17 and under, 34 of those are in the age group of 18 to 49, 22 in the age group of 50 to 64, and 24 of those 65-plus. The point I want to make is we often talk about the older population, or the mature population, as I like to call it, 65 and older, being in high-risk groups. Note that the majority of cases in San Luis Obispo County are in the age group 64 and under, and there are a large number in the age group 49 and under. The thing about that is that young people, people 30 and younger, often appear asymptomatic, that is, have no symptom of COVID-19, but can still carry the disease and pass it on to others, even though they may just feel mildly fatigued, not have a fever, shortness of breath, or cough, but still be very contagious. And that's always very concerning with that age group. By region or by city, some data for you that hasn't been at least communicated by me in the past, 15 of the cases out of 83 are from Atascadero, 22 from Paso Robles, 6 from Templeton, 9 from San Luis Obispo, 12 from Oro Grande, 5 from the Pomo, 6 from Morro Bay, I'll repeat that, 6 from Morro Bay, and 8 from other communities in the county. And it's beginning to appear in all areas of the county, as we know, with higher concentrations in North County at this time. With comparison to other counties, we had been fortunate in that our cases were often much less than other counties compared to Santa Barbara and Kern County. We now see both Kern County and Santa Barbara cases exceeding San Luis Obispo County. As of yesterday, Kern County had 82 cases compared to 77 yesterday for San Luis Obispo County, and Santa Barbara County had 88 cases compared to 77 yesterday for San Luis Obispo County. So cases in those counties continue to rise. Monterey County, only 40 cases as of yesterday, and Kings County, 3 cases, if you're interested in that information. The status of these patients, 36 of them remain home and recovering, isolated. 10 of the 83 I mentioned are currently hospitalized. Two of those are in the intensive care unit on ventilators. And there have been no deaths in the county, fortunately, and 37 have fully recovered. The point I want to make about the patients that are in the hospital, one of the issues that the county is beginning to deal with is something called surge capacity. If you look at all of the four acute care facilities in our county, the number of hospital beds is fairly limited with regard to the numbers of new cases that they can take in, especially the number of ventilators available in the county. As a result of that, the county, through the action of the CAO, made a decision early on to build what's considered to be an alternate care site, or an ACS. The ACS is an acute care facility that will actually, or is being built, at Cal Poly. That alternate care site will not house COVID-19 patients. However, it will allow us to move less ill hospitalized patients away from the hospital into the alternative care site should a significant surge in the number of COVID cases increase in the county. The initial capacity of that facility will be 196 beds. And right now, they have called for medical volunteers. They've received over 200 applications for medical volunteers, from physicians to nurses to pharmacists to respiratory care individuals, et cetera, all the way down the line, auxiliary, lab people, a whole number of disciplines. And we're very proud of the communities or the county's response to this. The full capacity, at full build-out of that alternative care site will be 931 beds, anticipating a potential surge again in COVID-19, and trying to make lower levels of care available so that we can lighten up the load on hospitals and allow our community members access to acute care, excuse me, should there be COVID-19 diagnoses where patients need hospitalization. The number-one issue the county is facing, maybe there are a number of number-one issues, but one of the most important ones is just the availability of ventilators. About 14% of COVID-19 patients end up in the hospital. Of that, 4% of the total end up on ventilators. The issue with COVID-19 patients is the length of stay, or how long they're on a ventilator, is much longer than normal hospital averages. Patients, inpatients that are on respirators, or excuse me, ventilators for other reasons usually are on ventilators for anywhere from three to four days. However, COVID-19 patients nationally average 11 to 20 days on a ventilator. And you can see, the issue is that those patients tend to tie up ventilators for a longer period of time. We have limited numbers of ventilators available in the county. As a result of that, early on, the county placed an order for 100 ventilators to help augment the supply in our hospitals. The expected delivery date on those initial 100 ordered is unknown at this time. However, through a secondary source, they believe they have acquired 25 additional ventilators that will be delivered within the next two weeks. It should help augment that supply and provide available and necessary ventilation for the most ill patients who might contract or do have COVID-19, pardon me. In addition, the county continues to provide homeless services. There are three safe parking sites for homeless individuals that do not, who have autos and do not have a place to park in the evening. One is at the Los Osos Library. There are approximately 13 sites available there. There are six available in Oceano, and the third location is in San Luis Obispo at the San Luis Obispo Vets Hall. So if you are homeless and you do have an automobile and routinely sleep overnight, you may go to any of those sites, park for free, and there are shower facilities available there. 10 trailers have been outfitted at El Choro Regional Park to house the homeless. Also, the Prado Center has accommodations, as well as facilities in North County. The RTS system is offering free rides for any homeless individuals outside of the area to get to those facilities. Those are not for sick or symptomatic homeless individuals. I'll speak to that in just a moment. Those are for individuals who want to shelter in place overnight at these facilities. And again, these are not care facilities, these are simply places where you can go and stay overnight. There are shower facilities available there as well. With regard to potentially ill homeless individuals who have signs or symptom of COVID-19, which would include fever, shortness of breath, and respiratory symptoms, and general body fatigue, and body aches, you must be evaluated at a clinical site prior to being admitted at one of four potential motels that have been contracted with through the county. We do have one hotel in Morro Bay that has been contracted to provide care for positively diagnosed COVID-19 homeless individuals. However, this is not a routine overnight care facility for non-ill patients. So if you are having symptoms, you must either get to the emergency room or to a clinic, be diagnosed, and then placement will occur, including transportation to the appropriate site. We continue to be very strict with adherence to not only national, but also state and local guidelines for sheltering in place. Again, I want to thank our community members, our business entities, and also individuals operating hotels, motels, and vacation rentals for following the guidelines that have been established. These are extremely important. This is what is making a difference in our county and in the state of California versus other states. Many of you may have heard a number of national reports yesterday, that California has the flattest curve of any state in the country right now because of the early intervention of the governor to shelter in place, to insist on social distancing, and to be very strict with regard to guidelines for operating only essential businesses that are remaining open with appropriate social distancing. I cannot overemphasize the importance of that move early on. Comparatively, look at New York, the state experiencing the worst surge in cases, fully exceeding now 60% of the cases in the U.S., are concentrated in New York. And we know that's a very dense population with a lot of social interaction, a lot of international travel. I must tell you that they are now very much behind the curve, and we are very fortunate to be in California, following, and being in San Luis Obispo County, following the strict guidelines. I'll say it again for the fourth time, strict adherence to social distancing, strict adherence to sheltering in place, strict adherence by high-risk individuals that are 65 or older, especially those with secondary medical conditions such as congestive heart failure, any kind of respiratory disease, or diabetes, or pulmonary disease. You are in an extremely high-risk group and must socially distance yourself at all times from others. And you must assume that anybody that you do not know that is COVID-negative has COVID-19. That's the way you need to operate in order to continue to be safe in our communities. That's why our community members and our organizations are being very strict with regard to follow-up and making sure that we have strict enforcement to maintain these guidelines. Lastly, I want to again thank our team of volunteers, not only community members, but our staff for organizing. I want to point out a couple of programs that are available. If you're in need of a ride somewhere to receive medical care, other than 911 for emergencies, if you need groceries, if you're shut in and can't get to the supermarket to get your groceries, if you need medication delivered to you from your pharmacy, the Morro Bay Care Program can help you, Morro Bay Cares. If you go to the City of Morro Bay website, www.morrobayca.us, or just Google in City of Morro Bay, you will find right up front a click-on icon for the Morro Bay Cares Program, where you can sign up to receive voluntary assistance from a number of community members that have volunteered to help. In addition to that, there's an area to sign up for our "Are You Okay?", that's "Are You Okay?". That sign up is being facilitated by our fire department. They will, if you sign up, they will contact you daily to check on you, to make sure that you're okay, to check your needs, to see if there's something that you need delivered, and they will assist you in getting the needed supplies during this time that you might need. And so that's "Are You Okay?", again, right on the front page of the Morro Bay City website, also the Morro Bay Cares Program. We also have an area there for volunteers to sign up. We're looking for local volunteers to assist us in maintaining those programs. And there's also local business information on that very front page as well, giving you local business information as provided by the chamber, to find out which businesses are open for pickup, delivery, what essential businesses, as approved by the county, are still open and available. The COVID-19 hotline number also appears on that front page. That number is 805-772-6278, 805-772-6278. That's the COVID-19 hotline. And again, the readyslow.org is the county website where you can obtain comprehensive information daily about everything from needy programs, deliveries for groceries, and other things, but also all the information that I'm sharing you with regard to the number of cases in our county and in our community. I'll end with this, and then I'll open it up for public comment. Ladies and gentlemen, we are in a very difficult time, but there's much hope. And the hope comes from a wellspring out of the hearts of individuals that care deeply for our community members, including not only your city council, your community staff, city staff, but also a large number of individuals who have volunteered to assist those in special need. And my heart just goes out to say thank you to so many of you that have stepped forward during this difficult time to say, hey, I want to be here, I want to help those in need, I want to do all I can to be helpful in this situation. And it just warms my heart to know that we live in such a wonderful community as Morro Bay. Lastly, remember, sheltering in place, but going out if you're not sick to get exercise while maintaining social distancing is essential. Maintaining social distancing of at least six feet at all times from individuals you do not know, who you can't confirm are COVID-19-free, is imperative. Good nutrition and exercise is critical to maintain the status of your immune system. I've given you resources should you need those.
I'll look right at the camera.
And certainly, if you have signs and symptoms of COVID-19, which again, many of you, or all of you should know, include fever, shortness of breath, cough, aches and pains, body aches and pains, call your physician before going in to find out where you should be triaged. Certainly, if you're severely ill, call 911. However, don't just walk into the clinic unannounced because you have the potential for infecting other people that may be in the waiting room as well. So that's an important note from our medical community to our potential patients that are receiving care in our community. Thank you again for all that you do for Morro Bay. That's my report, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share with you an update on COVID-19. Be safe and be well. With that, I'm going to open up public comment. This is public comment for items on the agenda. Let me just read to you what we're doing now that we're not able to convene at the Vets Hall. In order to prevent and mitigate the effects of COVID-19 pandemic and limit potential spread within the city of Morro Bay, in accordance with Executive Order N-2920, the city will not make available a physical location from which members of the public may observe the meeting or offer public comment. Remote public participation is allowed in the following ways. One, community members are strongly encouraged to submit agenda correspondence in advance of our meeting, and watch the meeting live on either Cable Channel 20 or as streaming live on our website, the city's website. Agenda correspondence received by the city clerk's office prior to the meeting will be published on the city website, and a final update one hour prior to the meeting start time, the additional publication will occur. Any agenda correspondence received less than an hour before the meeting start time may not be posted until after the meeting. If you'd like to speak now for public comment on an agenda item, and these are for items on the agenda only, please use the following information to call in. And many of you may be waiting in line, and you will be called on according to the queue, and you will have three minutes. You'll be placed in a queue until I open public comment for all items on the special meeting agenda. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. The public comment phone-in number is 1-818-794-7004. The show number, you'll be asked for show number, it's number 2607. Again, the show number is number 2607. The guest PIN is number 464192. Again, the guest PIN is number 464192. Thank you. And with that, I will ask AGP to allow our first public commenter in the queue, if we do have one, to go ahead and speak. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have one public comment. If you could give your name for the record, that'd be great. Hold on one second, I'm clicking you in.
Hello?
There you are.
My name is Dan Tedsby. My name is Dan Tedsby, I live in Morro Bay.
Go ahead, Dan.
Hello, I'm the mayor of the city council.
Yes.
Reading over the initial agenda, I had concern that the resolution, the emergency resolution which was going to be voted upon, said that it would be unread. And I believe this to be in violation of the Brown Act and other public notifications to know exactly what emergency resolutions are being voted upon. Again, I read in the initial minutes, or excuse me, agenda, that this would be unread, and I have extreme concern about that, that it should be read for the public's notification and edification so that they know and understand exactly what the city council is voting upon in an emergency resolution going forward for the COVID-19. So I would appreciate consideration of reading in the entirety of the emergency resolution. This has been a passed issue. I know from Mayor Herring and other members of the council to know exactly what's being voted upon for different resolutions that have passed, because it's become somewhat confused as resolutions are discussed and so on. So again, I'm requesting that the resolution be read in its entirety before the city council votes upon it, for the sake of transparency and openness. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate your public comment. AGP, do we have any other public comment?
No, that was the last public comment.
Okay. With that, I will go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to council and staff, and ask our attorney, Chris Niermeyer, could you please comment on Mr. Sedley's comments during public comment about, number one, not reading the resolution violating the Brown Act potentially, and I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Honorable Mayor, city council members. So in regards to whether or not the full reading is going to be waived, the Brown Act is being complied with insofar as the agenda has been posted, it's available, it's been sent out through the Internet. And I don't understand the comment that, for some reason, we need to read the entire resolution or urgency ordinance. The Brown Act does not require that, as long as the council agrees to introduce it and vote upon it through title with further reading waived. If council would like to, it can be read in its entirety, but like every other council meeting, ordinances and resolutions do not need to be read in their entirety if the council votes to just vote on the title. And of course, there's a staff report that will be presented on what these are doing.
Great, thank you for that comment. And what I'll do is go ahead and during any questions or comments by council, if you do have a preference, council members, to have it fully read, please air that. So I will move us to special agenda item number one. This is adoption of uncodified urgency ordinance to confirm and adopt City of Morro Bay Regulation Number One, COVID-19. Number One, COVID-19, as promulgated by Director of Emergency Services on March 30th, 2020 pursuant to the existence of a local state of emergency, providing state and county orders applicable within the jurisdiction of the city of Moro Bay and issued in response to COVID-19, to be expressly enforceable by the city authorities through all enforcement provisions within Moro Bay Municipal Code and subject to $1,000 fines. With that, I will turn it over to our staff, Mr. Collins, for his presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm actually going to defer to our city attorney to lead off the report, but we, we will be able to answer questions for you. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Chris, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, City Council, City of Moro Bay. As detailed in the staff report that has been published, it was published yesterday, I won't go into all of the, all the different facts of the COVID pandemic, other than in short, in December 2019, COVID was detected, COVID-19 outside of the country. On March 4th, California Governor Newsom declared a state of emergency. That was followed up on March 13th by the President of the United States doing the same. On March 14th, our city manager declared a state of emergency in the city and that was ratified by the city council shortly thereafter. Since then and continuing till now, there have been multiple state and county orders that essentially revolve around maintaining social distancing, public health, and distinguishing between essential and non-essential businesses. Most of these are geared towards maintaining the public health, as the mayor talked about beginning of the meeting. It's key to point out that already most of these orders do apply in the city of Moro Bay. However, the city is, in cooperation with the county, decided to move forward with helping the county to enforce these orders. It must be noted too, that the orders that are applicable in the city of Moro Bay are punishable under state law already as misdemeanors, i.e. a criminal charge. Staff is actually seeking the flexibility of having different levels of enforcement. And what this is doing basically is allowing the county and state orders to be adopted by reference into the local code so staff can enforce, meaning code enforcement in the police department, these various orders with administrative fines or infractions. And then finally, if compliance isn't secured, then go to criminal charges. The local code also provides for the original administrative fines of starting at $100 and then it goes on to increasing the fines. The fine is being suggested to be changed to $1,000. Note that if these administrative fines are levied, there needs to be first a written warning and then only 24 hours later can they be actually, you know, someone be charged and cited with them. Of course, there's always the option of enforcing these orders with misdemeanors, but that would be a criminal charge and staff is seeking the flexibility of using all the enforcement mechanisms in the local code rather than just following state law. On March 30th, the city manager under emergency powers actually issued Regulation Number One, which does what's before council right now. However, the local code provides that the city council at the earliest practicable time must ratify and consider any of the regulations issued by the city manager. And so that's what's before the council tonight. It's an urgency ordinance, which means that it's effective immediately. There is a termination clause in there that it automatically ends either when the state of emergency is lifted or if council decides to terminate it prior to that point. It also will need a forfeits vote to pass as an urgency ordinance and there'll be findings needed of this is necessary for the immediate preservation of health, safety and welfare, which is laid out in detail in the urgency ordinance. Available for any questions and in regards to how enforcement will occur and what enforcement issues have been occurring in the city, I'll defer to the police chief and to the community development director and city manager on those issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, for that report. Appreciate it very well done. With that, I'm going to open it up for council member questions. Councilmember McPherson, would you like to start us off, please?
I would be happy to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And first, let me just say how proud I am of our community. I am, I really believe that everybody has stood up to the challenge and is taking it seriously and I'm so proud to see that. Here are my questions. I would like to find out how we are currently enforcing the, the fact that it's a misdemeanor currently, how is that being enforced in the city?
Okay. Who wants to take the, Scott?
I'd be happy to start.
There you go, okay.
Thank you, Scott.
I'd be happy to start.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, so where we're at right now is we've developed some, some notification of warning letters so we can implement the action that, that city manager Collins implemented and that we're reviewing tonight. We've been receiving through the county call center, a daily update of calls related to potential violations in Moro Bay. We've also been receiving calls from our public about potential violations of the orders issued by the state and by the county. And so we compiled a list of those. Today was the first day that we went out and made contact with, potentially with those, with those businesses that were in violation. We, there were, let me look here real quick. We had, I think there was nine of them that we made contact with or that we investigated today. We made contact with a few of them. Several of them were closed and actually operating in compliance. We let the folks that were operating in violation, we gave them a verbal warning. We didn't issue any to this point, written warnings and certainly no fines at this point. So that's kind of where it's at at this point. Our intent really is in making contact with the folks that are potentially in violation is to, is to educate them, let them know what the requirements are and, and then hopefully get voluntary compliance. And if we're not getting that, then we would issue the warning and then it would be followed by the fine potentially, assuming council moves forward with approval of the urgency ordinance this evening.
Okay.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember McPherson.
And is that the way that we would proceed moving forward if we pass it, following the same process of first a verbal warning, then a written warning and then a fine? So that the fine is in defiance of the warning?
So, so the direction that I gave our, our code enforcement officer this morning when we spoke before he went out was that, you know, to make, to make contacts, have a conversation with folks, if they were amenable to, you know, following the direction that we're providing and complying with the orders, then provide them, just leave them with a verbal warning and then to follow up later to make sure they're in compliance. If we were receiving a lot of pushback, a lot of argument about it, the direction was to hand them the actual written warning and then to follow up the following day to verify compliance, which means that that following day, we could be issuing citations for that $1,000 amount. Certainly, we're open to direction from the council this evening as well related to this, so doesn't have to be that way, but that's the direction that I gave this morning because we hadn't had this meeting yet.
Okay. And is this the same way that we are enforcing the social distancing? How are we enforcing that?
Jody, you want to take that?
Yeah, I'll jump in here. This is Chief Cox, Mayor, Council, thank you. We're doing the same thing that, that code enforcement is doing even on the social distancing. We're trying to seek voluntary compliance through all aspects of the executive orders that have been issued. We're, we're asking for people to comply voluntarily, to, to separate, to move into different areas if they're, if they're congregating together. The businesses, we've been doing the same as code enforcement, we're coordinating with them. We'll be working with them closer tomorrow to obtain a list of those businesses that either the police department or code enforcement is providing warnings to so that we're not duplicating our efforts. We'll create a master list of all of those people that have been issued warnings so that we can operate off of that moving into the future. But currently, we're still seeking voluntary compliance as a means of affecting what we're trying to obtain in both the essential businesses operating and in the social distancing. So that, that's the primary goal at this point is to seek compliance and hopefully avoid having to get into the enforcement component of the $1,000 citations. But, but this ordinance would allow us for those that refuse to comply moving forward.
And you indicated that we, this gives us more flexibility. Does that mean that you could charge them with a misdemeanor instead of this administrative penalty? So you would have a choice in whether or not you wanted to use this or would you automatically use this?
The, the penalty could be the $1,000 fines or six months in jail or both. That would be dependent upon the prosecution process. But our, our goal, like I said, is, is hopefully not to have to get to that point.
Okay. And do we know if other jurisdictions in the county have taken similar action?
I, I believe most of the other municipalities are doing the similar process. And again, you know, in our meetings as police chiefs and the sheriff throughout the county, we've, we're all on the same page about the same type of compliance, trying to get voluntary compliance without having to get into the enforcement action. But I am aware that there are several other agencies outside of our county that have already started the enforcement action because they understand the seriousness of, of this spread and trying to stop it. So as of right now, most of the agencies within our county are all operating under the same guidelines that the city of Moro Bay is using right now.
Councilmember McPherson, if I could, this is Chris Newmeyer. The city of San Luis Obispo and city Paso Robles, my understanding, have actually already adopted, I believe, either earlier this week or at the end of last week, similar urgency ordinances or resolutions to essentially adopt the county and state orders as enforceable under the local code. So what's being proposed on this agenda item, at least for local law, is something that other cities have already done in the county, not all of them, but some of them.
And also with a, a fine as high as $1,000, is that?
I, I believe that either one or both of those cities already provide for in their code that unscheduled administrative fine for $1,000. Moro Bay's code provides for the first violation is $100, but that isn't always the case. A lot of cities just already have as their default $1,000. So frankly, our $100 fine for administrative citations in general arguably is low anyways. And I'd have to double check exactly what they have on their books, but as I recall, at least one of those cities already had their default to be $1,000. So we're bringing ours up to an enforcement standard that others are already following.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious what, how you happened to select $1,000 as opposed to something lower than that?
This was in discussion with city staff on an amount that it was believed by staff would get the attention of individuals that are violating the shelter at home orders and the essential business versus non-essential business distinction. The thinking was that issuing $100 citation obviously wouldn't get someone's attention as much as a potential $1,000 violation. And it must be pointed out that as the chief just mentioned and the community development director mentioned earlier, that there will be warnings given out first and then after that, there'll be follow-up to see if there's been compliance. And that's when the $1,000 fine would be issued. Now, of course, if there are extreme situations where law enforcement determines that they need to start issuing misdemeanors, they can already do that under state law. But this gives staff flexibility of not coming in with the criminal misdemeanor hammer for the first violation.
Well, thank you. Thank you all very much. Those are all my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember McPherson. Councilmember Addis, any questions?
Yeah, just one. Can you remind us and the public where the list of businesses is that are considered essential and non-essential? Like where would the public find that if they're wondering?
So in the actual urgency ordinance that was published, there are four exhibits. One of those is labeled as Local Emergency Order from County of San Luis Obispo and then it says Regulation Number Four. That has a detailed list of what the county is considering to be essential versus non-essential.
And Mayor, is that the? Oh, sorry.
I was just going to say that's included in both the urgency ordinance before council, but the public can also go to slowready.com, I believe that's the website for the county, and just look for their local emergency order regulation number four and that's online.
Is that readyslow.org?
Yes, I think, I think that's the right one.
Readyslow.org?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. And I just, I wanted to say a huge thank you to staff and to all the folks that have been working really hard on this crisis. I know from behind the scenes what's been going on and it's been almost a 24 hours a day effort to address this and I appreciate this emergency ordinance coming forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis, questions?
Yes, I want to echo Dawn's appreciation for all of our staff. I want to ask about essential travel. I know that we encourage people to get outside and exercise and I know that some people are not able to walk out their front door to exercise. Are we okay with people driving to recreation areas? Are we okay with mobility impaired people who take daily drives just for diversion and to get out of the house? Are we okay with people driving to parks and having picnics, kind of a social distraction?
I'll take that. Councilmember Davis, yeah, we are not enforcing that type of travel, traveling to those essential locations either to perform your approved exercise or shopping or picking up medications or those types of things. There are no restrictions on, on vehicle travel at this, this point and that kind of goes through the region that CHP is also not stopping vehicles to pursue that kind of inquiries about where people are going. We're, we're not doing any of that at this time. We, we still, people that can go out and drive to a location, there are, as you know, some restrictions about certain parking lots and certain areas that are, that are a little more difficult to get to to stop the congregating of, of people. But for those people that need to, to access those areas, whether it be the Embarcadero or a city park, yeah, they're still allowed to do that.
Okay, thank you. That's all my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. Councilmember Heller, any questions? Councilmember Heller?
Tell him to unmute.
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Yes, there we go.
Okay, I made this.
Yes.
Backwards.
Thank you.
Thank you. Technological challenge.
I have counsel, there you go. I've even got you on the video there.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
I have a few questions. Most, most of my questions were covered by Councilmember McPherson. I do have a question about the enforcement of ADA parking. Is that something that you do, Chief Cox, or who handles that particular enforcement?
Yeah, we'll handle those or again, with limited parking availability, we take that into consideration, but we try to address the ADA issues for those folks that need those the most. There are limited ADA spots down in the Embarcadero as an example, but that's something that is, is kind of complaint driven. If, if we get a complaint of, of somebody accessing ADA parking that prevents somebody that may actually need the spot, then we will absolutely go down and enforce those types of violations.
Sure, okay. What are the typical violations that you're dealing with or that are most, most frequent?
We've, we've had a couple of complaints of some, some outdoor patio type dining where some of the businesses had, had allowed people to sit out in the outdoor areas and eat. We've been addressing those as they come up. We've had reports of, of people kind of congregating in certain areas. We tried to respond and make contact with them and again, ask them to voluntarily, you know, separate, move into other areas. We've had a few complaints in relation to juveniles that have been kind of congregating either at the bike park or the skate park, you know, now that they're out of school and have limited things to do, they still have a tendency to kind of group up, again, thinking that they're in kind of a, a safe group, so to speak. But those are typically the, the complaints that we're getting right now. We address those each one on, on a case by case basis and again, using that, that, that policy of, of educating them first, asking them to comply by either moving to another location or by separating and, and then giving them the opportunity to do so. or by separating, and then giving them the opportunity to do so.
Is there any residents that we can help you with this task?
Really just by calling us and letting us know if you see something that you believe to be a violation. And again, but kind of think through that list as you can obtain the list of essential and non-essential services on readyslow.org. Just because somebody is out walking doesn't mean they're in violation. Even if they're in a group of three or four people, that could be a family that lives together that's walking to get their exercise. Or they may have gone and picked up a meal somewhere and be going somewhere to eat that meal together outside. So educating themselves on what the possible violations are and then contacting us accordingly.
Okay. Those are all the questions I have. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. This is a tough challenge for all of you. A lot of this information is coming down from higher-level agencies. And you're being asked immediately, really, to enforce things that you've never had to deal with before. And I think you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Great, great questions and a perfect comment. Thanks. My question would be, would this fine potentially also be levied against vacation rentals, hotels, motels that are housing and continuing to potentially advertise for travelers to come in as opposed to those coming in to either shelter in place or provide services to family members that live in the area?
We drafted two versions of the notice of violation. One of those letters, the notice is to address the essential businesses that may be operating outside of their scope. The other letter is deemed for non-essential businesses that should not be operating at all. As of right now, I don't believe that there's been a directive indicating that the vacation rentals are not allowed to operate. That might be something that Mr. Graham might be able to elaborate on. But if it's deemed that they are non-essential and still being utilized in that manner, then we would utilize that warning notice crafted specifically for the non-essential businesses.
Yeah, and I'll add to that. This is Scott Collins, city manager. We did send out a letter to, or emailed to hoteliers and vacation rental owners that we would like them to cease all activity related to vacation or recreation, travel, lodging, if you will. And have gotten a really good response from many of them saying, well, we're gonna postpone bookings until the COVID is clear. But we'll maintain their lodging for folks who are deemed essential workers like, you know, nurses and doctors and those who support those essential services or for people who are coming here to assist, you know, family members or folks who need to get out of their house locally to lodge somewhere else. So it is still deemed an essential service, but the intent is for providing for those folks.
Thank you. Thank you both for that. My only other question, and this is because a couple of community members asked me. So I'm asking you, because the city is facing a difficult financial situation, are we doing this to make money?
No. The sacrifices being made by our local business community are significant. That's statewide, nationwide. Businesses going out, having to lay off their staffs, making really, really challenging, heartbreaking decisions because they're making sacrifices for all of us. And in doing so, they are no longer making money. And, you know, a subset of that is that the city's not collecting revenues that we typically would from those businesses. So the business community's been kind of ravaged by this virus and have taken measures that need to be taken to save lives. But there is a consequence to that. No, the city's not making money from this.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I did ask because a number of people had asked me. I think I knew the answer, but thank you for that answer. With that, I'll close questions. Yes?
Can I ask one last question?
Yeah, absolutely. Please.
Thank you. I noticed that we received an email from one of our citizens asking how we were going to be conveying this information if we pass this to the general public so that they understand what the consequences are. And I'm wondering if you could address that.
Ms. Collins?
Yeah, this is Jen Callaway, Finance Director. We'll be doing some social media pushes tomorrow and list a notification on our Facebook page and probably do a press release as well. And we're working on doing a second flyer to our residents or mailing to our residents that will include this information in there.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I'll bring it back to council. I'll go ahead and move adoption by title only with further reading waived, uncodified urgency ordinance number 631 to confirm and adopt Morro Bay Regulation Number 1 COVID-19 as promulgated by Director of Emergency Services on March 30th, 2020.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mayor Heding, seconded by Councilmember Addis. I'll open it up for discussion. The reason I'm moving this is I've had extensive discussions with staff and I've read the input we've received from community members as well. I'm convinced that the health risk to not only our community but our county and state is still significant and that strict adherence to the guidelines will flatten the curve and prevent a massive surge in cases in our city. Thusly, I think a big hammer appropriately utilized by staff in administering enforcement is necessary. I feel comfortable that due process will be followed with appropriate initial warnings, much like progressive discipline, an initial verbal warning and possibly a second written warning. And have been impressed that that will occur, that this is not a scheme to make money, but that we do need a hammer like this to allow staff to deal with the most egregious cases if they should continue. So with that, any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, I can.
I do sound right. I can't believe it.
Go ahead.
I'd like to echo your comments. I'd like to follow up a little bit about how we let the public know. I mean, let's be honest, there's an enormous amount of information that we're all dealing with. It's come down very quickly and probably is going to change as time goes on. So I think the social media piece and the mailers are all very well and good. But I'm wondering if we can put together some kind of a very simple flyer with a date on it that says, you know, these are the four things we're looking for that we need you to do right now that people could maybe hand out to their friends even. I mean, there is, there is a big difference between the full text of the ordinance and what it is we're really asking people to do. And 99% of the people here in the community want to do the right thing. But I think there is a fair amount of confusion because of the technicality of the way the agenda items are generally written. And I'm just throwing it out there as an idea, as another way to get the information out on a face-to-face basis when you're walking around on the street. So I would just throw that out there as a suggestion. My comments are, I think we're doing exactly the right thing and giving the flexibility to the staff that they need to do what is a very difficult job. And I agree that the $1,000 versus $100 does get people's attention. And that's what we need to do in today's environment. So I think it's exactly the right thing to do. And I support this agenda item and the recommendation by staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. I think excellent comments. And I think a point well taken with regard to communication. I'm sure staff has noted that. Thank you. Other comments?
I think on the idea of a flyer, I like that idea. I know that's not what's on the agenda right now. But I hope we can stay consistent with what readyslow.org is putting out. There's so much information out there for people. And I do think they start to get confused. Is Morro Bay's the same? Are the recommendations the same? And if we can use some of the materials that are already posted. And then I hope all of us as council members, I know I'm trying to send out newsletters and I'm in Facebook and I'm doing like a online Zoom call for the community. But I hope all of us as council members are sharing the information, if nothing more than just the link to the press release. I want to just compliment Councilmember Davis. I grabbed the idea from him, who simply sent out one of the press releases to his email list, which eventually got forwarded on throughout the community. But I just hope that each of us are taking it upon ourselves because I don't think city staff can do the amount of legwork that it's gonna take to get all of this information out.
Thank you again. Excellent comments. I appreciate that. I'm sure staff appreciates that feedback for consistency. Any other comments?
I would just add that I fully support the recommendation as well. And I'm glad that I understand now the purpose of doing it. And it really is to make a point to those people who are not taking it seriously. And I just wanted to make sure, and I'm now reassured, that we're not out to get people who just didn't understand and didn't know what to do. So I'm very grateful for the explanation of how it's gonna work. So I do support it. Thank you.
One last comment, Mr. Mayor. I just think the staff, fire, police, but beyond fire, police even, the whole city staff is just doing a remarkable job. And I think, I consider you all first responders. And I just want to thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Again, I'll reiterate and tell you, I appreciate those comments and absolutely agree with you and I can concur with your emotion. With that, if there are no more, oh, Councilmember Davis, thank you.
Yes, I consider that this is a life-or-death war against an invisible enemy. And this is our best weapon to take forward. And I thank Chris and our staff for bringing it to us.
Thank you. With that, Madam Clerk, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
And Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. That moves us to item number two. This is Adoption of Resolution to Delay Transient Occupancy Tax Related Late Fees and Penalties and Discussion of Tydland's Trust Lease Payments. With that, I will turn it over to our esteemed city manager, Mr. Collins, for his presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. And I just want to take a moment, since I have the air here, before jumping into this item, that, you know, staff really does appreciate the support and leadership from our city council. Your comments mean a lot to us. You know, folks are putting in the hours to do what we need to do to keep our community safe and help keep our community informed with the ever-changing environment they're under. And our community's been absolutely amazing and very supportive of what we're all trying to do here together. And I also want to thank the business community for doing, taking the tough steps to keep us safe as well. And also the city attorney, which I didn't thank last time. I'm sorry about that, Chris. He's been phenomenal in just keeping abreast of all the changes on the legal side, as well as our clerk team for providing an impromptu public meeting that where our members of the community can still participate even from home. That's no easy task to do while also doing their regular jobs. So, and thank you, council, for bearing with us in this new approach to providing or conducting public meetings. So I'll move on. Item number two, as the mayor mentioned, is the recommendation is to adopt Resolution 2620 authorizing the city administration through the finance director to delay collection of late fees and penalties for overdue transient occupancy tax here, from here on out to be referred to as TOT. Receive first days during the months of February and March 2020 and delaying the payments until August 31st, 2020 pursuant to the COVID-19 pandemic state of emergency. And the second recommendation is to review the letter sent to the city's Tydland's Trust leaseholders and subtenants that outline the city's suspension of late fees and penalties for lease payments pursuant to the COVID-19 pandemic state of emergency and to provide direction as appropriate. So I'll just move through the staff report. At this time, the fiscal impact of these recommendations are unknown at this time. And it should be noted that while hoteliers and vacation rental owners and RV park owners may choose to not remit TOT for the months of February and March until August 31st, they do have to pay it. It is not a waiving, it's just a deferral. So the postponement means we still would receive the TOT at just a later date, though it would still be booked into this current fiscal year. So the genesis of this is that our hoteliers and VRs and RV park owners have asked the question if there is an opportunity to defer TOT. It's important to note that the TOT is not the hotelier, VR, or RV owner's money. It's the people's money. It's a tax to help recoup the cost of visitors using our services in our community. But we are in an extraordinary period of time with the pandemic. And there are some seeking relief from that to either help continue to keep the lights on or to continue to pay employees through this challenging time. And we understand that. And other cities in our community have taken similar actions within the last couple of weeks. And so the same request has been made of our lodging community, of city council. And so we bring this forward to you today. And as I noted, the fiscal year ends on June 30th, 2020. But we do not close our accounts on the fiscal year until August 31st. And that's why we chose that date as a date by which they would need to pay if they decide to defer. And by waiving the penalties and interest on those penalties, it does save them some money during those times. Again, this is not to say all hotels, VRs, and RV park owners will take advantage of it. It's really meant for those who are struggling to pay the bills. And this could just keep them afloat through this really, really challenging period of time. This would not apply to the Tourism Business Improvement District funds nor the Visit Slow Cal Tourism Marketing District. We would continue to receive those to keep the ability to market our destination as a tourist place after COVID-19 has moved on. And we hope that sooner rather than later, of course. The lodging operators would still be expected to pay the city TOT funds once they can, again, no later than August 31st. And failure to remit payment of those TOTS for those months of February or March by the deadline of August 31st will result in fines, interest costs. And for short-term vacation rental license holders, they would lose their license to operate in our community. The second item is the letter that we sent to the city's waterfront leaseholders and subtenants. We had, you know, a number of leases and subleases reach out to the harbor director who helps manage the leases and ask for any ability to get some relief. Again, the same scenario there, just trying to keep the lights on while they're closed and be able to pay staff if possible. And so the city manager, with consultation with staff, felt that was an appropriate thing to do, given the direction, general direction we got from council, which is to take action where we deem fit to help our business community. And of course, we wanted to return to council with an update and ultimately get ratification of these tough choices. We're not necessarily asking for anything tonight other than just to acknowledge the letter. And we are doing follow-up with our tenants and subtenants to get a sense of what their needs are and then report back to the city council sometime, probably in April, with more information. So that is our report. The resolution is attached, as is the letter that we sent to the Tydland's Trust leaseholders and subtenants. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. I appreciate that presentation. And with that, I'll open it up for council questions. Councilman Heller, would you like to start us off this time?
Sure, absolutely. So just so I'm clear about this. So the TOT that is collected in March and February, March, is still due to the city. It's just they will not be penalized if they don't turn that in until the end of August. Is that right?
You got it. That is... You, you got it. That, that is a, a very succinct way of saying what I said in a lot of words. Um, yes, they, they don't have to remit TOT to the city for the months of February, March until August 31st. Um, of course, they have to submit it, um, by that date or else they will, um, they will, there will be significant consequences. Um, but this just goes, throws a lifeline to several businesses, uh, from, based on what we've, we've heard from, from hoteliers and VR owners and RV park owners.
Okay. And then the TOT for April that we're in now and May and subsequent months is still, uh, due within 30 days at the end of that month. And if that, those are not turned in appropriately, there will be fines?
Correct. If, 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 um, of course, the council could choose to, um, extend, uh, this, um, oh gosh, uh, deferral period, if you will, for, for
Right.
future months, um, we would have to sort of take those up, uh, case by case and, um, obviously keep in close contact with our lodging community. Um, but that's a great point. Thank you for making that.
Okay. And then we have talked in the past about auditing and so forth. Is that on the back burner for now? Or is auditing going to be happening in the next, uh, six months or so?
I, I, uh, great question, Councilmember Heller. I, I, I think it'd be wise at this time to, uh, any, anything like that. Of, of course, it would incur expenses for the city, but also, um, just, uh, maybe it'd undo tension and, and, and stress and worry for
Probably not right, not the right time to do that.
That's sort of my general take, but of course it's, this is, it would be a council decision. Yeah.
Okay. Um, let's see, her. Those are my questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Heller. Councilmember Davis, any questions, sir?
No, I, I don't have any questions. Uh, I clarified a couple of things with Scott this morning, but I'm good.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Addis, uh, questions?
Yeah, you probably mentioned this, but why only those two months if we know that, um, like the governor and the state school superintendent today suggested that school's not going to go back in this year. The president said the stay at home should go through May. So why would we only do February, March? And what would it take if we wanted to extend?
Great, great question. We're, we're going kind of what we know today. Um, we will be coming to council with, um, you know, budget numbers and the like. And a lot of that is sort of, um, uh, best guess work. And, and so, and that's sort of how we're approaching these, these measures is what we know today. And we know today that this is the request being made is for those months. Um, you know, I think those requests were made as, as the situation's evolving and it probably will change. In other words, we could expect the request would come for future months as well. And I think we would take those as a case-by-case basis and it would require a similar, um, probably just amending the resolution. So it's a simple act by council to extend, uh, to the months of, uh, April and May if, if, if that would be needed.
So it would come back before council and some kind of, like we, it would come back through a meeting format?
Correct. Yeah. So whether it would be, it could be a regular council meeting as we intend to get back on the regular council meeting schedule, or we could do, um, a one-off special meeting if necessary. Again, to, we're, we're sort of monitoring the, the needs and the requests of the lodging community. And so this, this is what we were requested to do at this time.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Addis. Councilmember McPherson, any questions?
Uh, yes. Um, my question actually, and I notice he's talking about subsidies and penalties, but it includes a line that says, um, possible, uh, deferral of payments. And I'm just wondering if you could explain, uh, is it the same, uh, type of thing where they would be deferred to pay until, um, August?
So, sorry, are we, are you referring to the, the, um, the Tydland's trust leases?
Right, right. In the letter from Eric.
Yeah, I think, I think we're, we're, we're sort of, um, just gave them a, a bit of comfort to say we're, we, we understand the need. And, and I think we got to define it a little bit better. So we, we simply were making council aware of, of the, the dialogue going on and the considerations. And it could look very similar to, um, a formal resolution like you see today on the TOT side. So we, we want to gather more information, um, from, from our leaseholders and subtenants and then formalize something that we could bring back to council soon.
Okay. So you haven't already offered, uh, deferral of payments?
Let Jen respond to that. Sorry.
Hi, this is Jen, Finance Director. Um, and maybe Eric can piggyback off of this. Um, but he's been, um, in the last few days to week or so, been in receipt of some requests. So we, um, he sent out that letter in response to that to say, we understand, we're not interested in charging you penalties or fees at this point. The harbor, um, lease fronts operate a little bit differently than TOT and that there isn't monthly submittals and reporting. Um, so depending on what the requests are that he's receiving, um, kind of evaluating those to see if we can come up with some kind of reporting, maybe on a quarterly basis or monthly, that would at least identify what we could expect to receive. So we know how we'll end the fiscal year. Um, and that's why there's, that letter tends to be a little bit more vague. We aren't, if, if customers right now can't pay, um, the, we're, we're able to give them a deferral at this time and we'll come back to council to, um, kind of solidify that as, as the city manager mentioned. And Eric, do you want to, um, add anything to that?
Mr. Andrewsby, are you there?
You hear me now?
Gotcha.
There we go. Gotta overcome the technology. Uh, yeah, I've nothing much more to add. I've had a number, probably half a dozen leaseholders and as many commercial fishermen ask, you know, and then state, you know, hey, we just can't pay because their subtenants aren't paying. So I think Jen covered it pretty well. We're just, the letter was just sort of a blanket, you know, hey, we're listening. We know what the issues are. Don't worry about paying your bills right now. We'll, we'll catch back up to it. So we'll keep track of it and then come up with a little more formal, um, process later, depending on, I mean, I think really depending on how far this thing goes and how long it lasts. You know, you know, most people can probably live for the month of not paying and, and turn back and around and pay back later. But if it goes on much longer, I'm not sure how it's going. So that's all the letter was, just to kind of get it, get it out there and get everybody aware that, that we're listening and, uh, hopefully taking care of stuff.
Right. So, so essentially this is just kind of bringing the council up to speed and then you'll come back later with, um, if you want a specific act to take. Is that correct?
I think that's correct. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. That's all.
Great. And, um, I, you've covered my question. So thank you, council for that. With that, um, I'll close questions and open it up for either a motion or further discussion or both.
Uh, I'd like to go ahead and move, uh, staff recommendation for number one. And number two is simply review the letter. I don't think that requires any action.
I'll second.
So motion by Councilmember Davis for adoption of Resolution Number 2620 authorizing the city administration through the finance director to delay collection of late fees and penalties for overdue TOT, receiving, receive for stays during February and March 2020 until August 31st, 2020 pursuant to COVID-19 pandemic state of emergency. Uh, and that was seconded by Councilmember Addis. Um, any further discussion?
I just want to, oh, go ahead, Jeff. No, you go ahead.
I had one more question, Mr. Mayor, if I can.
Sure, absolutely. Yes.
No, I'm not sure that I understand how these leases actually work. Do we have any financial obligation to the state for these, uh, lease, leasehold properties?
This is Eric again. No, we don't. Uh, we, well, we, our obligation to the state is to report at the end of the year, at the end of every fiscal year, what our revenues and what some of our expenditures were. But no, we don't owe the state any money.
Okay. I wasn't sure about that. Thank you.
Good. Other, uh, comments or discussion?
I just wanted to, uh, thank the chamber for their letter. They sent a letter on, um, at least, I think it was on this agenda item and thank them, thank the chamber for their input and expressing the partnership with the city. And I wanted to thank the local businesses, um, and let them know that, you know, certainly I think most, all, I don't want to speak for council, I'll speak for myself. I very much appreciate the hardship that this is causing, appreciate them working in partnership, um, and appreciate that if we all work together, we'll get through this more quickly.
Well stated. Um, I'll add my support for, um, the, um, motion as well. And my thanks to staff for considering this and being proactive and bringing it to us. The balance is, um, we're facing, um, a financial crisis, a fiscal emergency, um, to be further discussed in a future, um, time with council. However, um, our, our businesses that at least we have, um, financial relationships with are under, um, extreme strain, especially the lodging industry, um, and our, um, businesses on the Embarcadero as well as general businesses in the city. And, uh, I think this is the least that we can do. We've gotten reassurance that this will be, um, reported back to us and we'll be able to follow up with potential further action if necessary. And I think the time limit is appropriate. So I would support as well and ask for a roll call vote.
May I also add my comments?
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you. I, I just want to say that I think this, uh, we have to do this for our businesses and for our community. And I echo, uh, Councilmember Addis's statement that we have to stick together in this and help each other. So thank you. My support.
Great. Uh, roll call vote.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember McPherson?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
Five oh. Thank you so much for that. Um, that ends the special meeting of the City Council of Morro Bay. I wanted to offer my thanks to, uh, Dana Swanson and Heather Goodwin, who have assisted us greatly. Uh, those of us that might be a little bit technologically challenged with this Zoom meeting. Um, I think it's been very successful. Hopefully the public is view, able to view and see and hear our comments well. Um, thank you also AGP for making this happen. I appreciate, uh, your work in this and, and all that you do for the community to make the information available to us in a timely fashion. With that, I will, um, adjourn the meeting. The next meeting of the Morro Bay City Council will be on, um, Tuesday, uh, the 14th of April. That will be a regular meeting, um, via Zoom, um, probably the same format, um, unless some major things happen. Um, you can assume that it will occur this way. Thank you. Be safe, be well, and have a great evening.
Thank you all.
Thank you.